Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I want to announce that parking validation and bus passes are now available for commission workshops and meetings. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus can pick up a pass from security on their way out, and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. If there's any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member, and also if any Board member has a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today, seeing none, there'll be, all Board members must have a duty and obligation to vote. Okay. Moving on to approval of the agenda. As well as the consent agenda. Motion? Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, I mean, leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. And Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. And I'm seeing that. Okay. Thank you, Lamar. Is there anyone, any members from the public here to speak tonight? Going once. Okay. Great. We have, yeah, moving on to presentations. We have a proclamation that I failed to ask a fellow commissioner to read. Mr. Moore.
Yes, there you go. I am joined by Paulina and Our Voice here for our County of Buncombe proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking is the exploitative buying and selling of human beings for labor and sex acts. Whereas the issue of human trafficking is a global, national, and local violation of human rights. Whereas Buncombe County enjoys the benefits of being a global tourism destination, we also incur the increased risks of human trafficking due to the tourism industry and disposable income associated. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to preventing human trafficking and has implemented a coordinated rapid response team partnering with community organizations, including Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, Asheville Police Department, Mission Hospital, Our Voice, Piscata Legal Services, Mountain Child Advocacy, the 100 Movement, and other agencies who are working together toward a common, a community free from human trafficking. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to supporting the safety of survivors of human trafficking and opened the Buncombe County Family Justice Center where survivors can access coordinated support from different partner agencies, including law enforcement, nonprofit service providers, and healthcare services. And whereas Buncombe County recognizes the strength of individuals in our community who have survived human trafficking, it encourages people to raise awareness, promote education, and support initiatives to address human trafficking. Whereas Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month is an opportunity to stand with survivors of human trafficking, to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes, and to recommit to preventing human trafficking in Buncombe County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe and the State of North Carolina as follows, that the month of January 2024 be proclaimed Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Buncombe County. That this Board does hereby urge all citizens to make the commitment to stop human trafficking by speaking out against violence and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chair, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, thank you. We greatly appreciate your partnership and for recognizing that January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Unfortunately, this is something we see regularly in our community, and the support and awareness that you bring is very valuable. I also want to thank you and say how appreciative we are of your support of the Buncombe County Family Justice Center. It's a place for survivors to come in, seek safety, speak to law enforcement, and also start their path in healing. So we greatly appreciate the partnership and the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Moore, as well. Avril, anything for the county manager's report tonight?
No, sir, no report.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to old business, consideration of the Board of Elections Director compensation, round two. Sharon, I have you down to.
As she's coming through, you will recall that last time you asked to bring some more information back, especially around voter turnout and number of precincts. So when you look at that data, you will see that Buncombe County does a whole lot more than the other counties when they look at turnout and voter location data. So Sharon will present that to you, and if you take that in consideration of what we talked about before, we believe that both numbers, both the 115 and the 109, are in line with similarly situated. So you get to choose, the 115 is definitely in line than the similarly situated counties. So Sharon can go through the data if you would like, but want to open it up for your conversations if there's anything that you wanted to ask or add.
Folks think about just having Sharon run through the slides real quick? Does that sound, okay?
Thank you. So the first slide that I'm going to show you is data that was gathered and shows the turnout and voter location data. What you'll see is Buncombe County is that we have a lot more, right? You know, I'm looking at almost 30% more when you look at Election Day voting locations as well as early voting. The closest is Cumberland, and then when you look at Durham, New Hanover, and Union, that's where we are 30% greater when it comes to locations than others. And on this slide, you're going to see, and this is one of the considerations, when I received this information, I was told this is, you have to take it with a grain of salt because not everybody, you know, looks at their information the exact same way that we do. But still, when you look at, you know, the municipalities and the others, you know, we are greater outside Union when it comes to municipalities, but definitely when it comes to other locations, we are by far greater than the others. Any other questions I might be able to answer for you?
I would agree. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one, Sharon. And on the other, I'm wondering, does that number include what we're about to have to do with our Buncombe County school districts? Because that would probably significantly increase the other.
So what I got was each county stores this data differently. The data should be taken as imperfect and does not represent things like size of the municipality, which districts run during the elections, or how often referendums appear, which may also affect this.
Yeah, so it'll probably increase with what we're about to have to do. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess to follow up, that's 2022 data?
Correct.
Is that fair? Okay. This is part of your question. Yeah, yeah.
Also, Mr. Chair, from what I'm seeing and all when comparing it, and we're talking about, what, 115, the salary going to that? What is it? How many thousands from where we are? We aren't talking about a lot of money. I think let's go ahead and approve it and move on.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move.
I have a second.
Okay, just motion in a second for that amount? Discussion? Thoughts? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Commissioners, I want to thank you for taking the time. I also want to thank the HR Department, the County Manager's Office for their help and support in this. Thank you very much on behalf of the Board of Elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. The Sheriff of Buncombe County is in the building. Our Downtown Initiative, thank you.
Good evening. So first, let me simply say thank you to the Buncombe County Commissioners, and also to the county leadership for their continued support for law enforcement. And I make that statement because there's been conversations that there has been no support, and I want to put a stop to that and say to you that I am thankful that that is happening with the Buncombe County Commissioners and the staff at the county. So over the past few weeks, myself and the interim chief, Mike Lamb, we've been engaged in a series of discussions that have been, in my opinion, productive. And based on those conversations, I'm optimistic that the Downtown Initiative at some point will be a joint collaboration between the city and the county. And so again, there are some things that we have to work out, and so I would just ask for everyone's patience as we move forward. But also, I've also met with the downtown businesses and their employees, and I made a commitment that we would then go downtown with a presence in downtown. And I want to make sure that folks understand that this does not diminish what we do in the other parts of the county. That's why we came up with a cost, and that would be individuals who are working on their days off. And that is why the numbers that you see on the slide is present is because we had to make it where folks would be willing to come and do secondary employment and that we would be able to staff it. So that is the reason for the cost, as you see. And so the next part of this is, I want to be extremely clear tonight as we move forward between the Downtown Initiative and the Co-Responder Unit. And so I want to make sure that folks understand that there's a difference. Right now, we're simply saying that we want to go downtown to show a presence because we know the staffing at the city has been challenging for them, and we want to support them. And again, this is our way of supporting the city. It's not us trying to take over the city. And so again, I want to make sure we're clear there, that once the staffing at the city that was risen to acceptable numbers, the plan is not for us to continue downtown. If we can, you know, leave, we will leave. But again, our whole goal and focus is to ensure that the safety of people who are visiting downtown, the businesses, as well as the workers and folks who work in downtown. So I don't know if you have any questions, but right now, we're planning on putting two, two-man teams downtown, and those are the numbers that you see. And we also will have a support of that with the Real-Time Intelligence Center monitor, if you will. And so that's our ability to turn on the cameras downtown and that that assists us in, you know, enforcing whatever needs to be done downtown. And some said or may ask the question about the roundups, that that's the term someone has used, not me, but that's the term that's been used. And we're simply saying that we're going downtown as a presence, and if there's a crime committed in our presence, of course, we will take the appropriate actions. But again, our goal is to, one, meet people where they are, and two, to give them the assistance they need without having to put them in our jail if need not, they need not be there. So I'm open for questions tonight. I'm sure some of you may have questions, and we're ready.
The two-man teams, will that be a sheriff and a policeman, or how are you working that?
Initially, it would be two deputies, but the hope is once we have scheduled further talks with the city, with APD, so that we can get to the goal of having one deputy and one officer working side by side. But right now, we're not there. We have some items that we need to get clarified and worked out amongst ourselves and to ensure that everyone is understanding of the expectations of each, you know, each organization.
Well, Sheriff, I appreciate that you and Chief Lamb are working together on this. Thank you so much for that. That sounds promising. And I also appreciate that you mentioned, because I know I do hear from folks in the county and want to make sure that the services are not being pulled from other areas of the county, so thank you for addressing that. So this, so these additional hours that we would be helping pay for with this would be on a voluntary basis, like extra, extra time for the.
Off-duty.
For the officers.
Yes, ma'am, be off-duty. But also, we would like the flexibility that once we get downtown, that those hours may change. And we would like, you know, four hours, I think is the minimum, but I would like to have the flexibility to go downtown and see what we're dealing with, and then also to hear back from the business owners and their employees, because sometimes those things don't mean the same thing. And what I mean by that, we have data to support, you know, when we feel that, you know, our presence is needed, the business owners may have a different timeframe.
And one other question. So on this, the cost here that you've given us, what is the cost for the incidentals? That's $10,000 there. What is that?
Yes, ma'am. So this, what you have is like over, I believe, 26 weeks, or it's supposed to be until June, right? And so part of that for me is if an officer makes an arrest, and they now have to work over that time, and so of course, if we don't use that hours, of course, we won't spend that money. But we have to have some kind of leeway that if they happen to work over, that we're able to pay them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff, I know you somewhat alluded to this, kind of gave us something to hang on our seats for in terms of the co-response model. Somewhere over the 26 weeks, is your plan or thought to slowly implement any new initiatives or just be on the lookout for what may be coming on that front?
Well, I think it's important that we understand that these two initiatives are different. The Downtown Initiative is really for a presence downtown to say that, you know, we're trying to ensure the safety of folks downtown. The Co-Responder is something different. The Co-Responder is where we are hoping that we have community paramedic, clinician, and a deputy working to solve our issues, concerns downtown. And let me be clear again that this is, in my mind, if we could work those two things together, if the downtown folks was working, they could now hand off to our Co-Responder once we have it stood up. We currently have just limited Co-Responder force from the Sheriff's Office, but our goal is to increase those numbers because we really feel that we would like a Co-Responder unit, not just for downtown, but for our entire county. So hopefully I answered that.
Yeah, so this is kind of the presence preventative method.
Yes.
First.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So thank you if you don't have any questions.
Commissioners, any other sponsor questions?
No, I just want to thank you, Sheriff Miller. I know I was in some of those meetings alongside you and some of your team to listen to downtown business owners, and just want to say I really appreciate the willingness of you and your team to take into consideration what they're saying and their deep concern for keeping their own employees safe.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the sheriff's request this evening.
Second. Specifically, the budget request.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Specifically approving the budget.
Yes, to specifically approve the budget request. Thank you.
Just a motion in a second to approve the budget request for the Sheriff's Downtown Initiative. Is there any further discussion or thoughts? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mason's here. Fiscal year 2023 audit presentation and a contract amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Happy to be here to formally close the fiscal year 2023 audit. We are asking you to consider two separate elements of the agenda item today. So first, I'll discuss the final contract amendment for this year's audit, and then I'll hand it off to our auditor for that presentation. Both of these items were heard by our audit committee this morning, and we do have their recommendation for you all to approve these items. The contract amendment you're considering today is the second and final amendment for this year's audit contract. Our initial target completion date for the audit was November 30th. In November, you approved a first contract amendment to increase the amount of the contract to allow for additional review of a compliance program as required by a newly in-scope amount, and to extend our audit deadline to December 31st to allow the completion of reviews that are completed by third parties outside ourselves and our auditors. Since the initial amendment, our third-party reviews carried us into the new year, but since we've had all information in hand, our auditors were able to complete their review on January 9th, and we have officially received our clean audit opinion and submitted our annual comprehensive financial report to the state as of yesterday, January 15th. The current and final contract amendment before you today is to align our actual and contractual audit completion dates, and there's no increase in cost associated with the amendment that we're requesting today. Following the audit presentation, I'll ask you to approve both the contract amendment and to accept the audit, but before, for now, before I hand it off, do you have any questions about the contract amendment? Before I hand off for the audit report, I do want to say thank you to you all as Commissioners and county management for your investment and support of this process. Also want to say thank you to Malden and Jenkins, our current audit firm. They've been a great partner this year, and thank you to county staff. There's some people downstairs, or hopefully they have gone home, but they've done a lot of, a lot of great work this year. And I'll now hand off to Mr. Tim Lyons, who is the partner in charge of our audit for Malden and Jenkins this year.
Great, thank you all for having me here tonight. So just have a brief presentation for you to kind of go over the audit process, to go over the opinion, our compliance reports. There's a section in there that says required communications. There's some slides in there for the things that the audit standards require that I submit to you all in writing, and so I'm not going to go through each one of them, but there's a few that I think are important for the Board to hear. A couple of slides on some financial trends focusing particularly on the county's general fund, and then some accounting recommendations and some related items. So I appreciate the introduction from Mason, but just by way of introduction, my name is Tim Lyons. I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins. This is our first year working with the county. So just kind of have a slide here to both kind of introduce ourselves as the county's external auditors and as well as my team. Doug Moses was our quality control reviewer, and as I talked about this morning with the audit committee, I mean, all of our audits, once we get finished, go to an independent partner within our firm who is also in our governmental practice. So we have really multiple sets of eyes on things to make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. And so this is our, kind of a snapshot of our firm and our governmental practice, as well as your engagement team this year for Buncombe County's audit. This slide here kind of covers at a very high level sort of the end result and conclusion of the financial statement audit. When you boil it down, the financial statements are prepared by the county, and we are engaged to audit them and to express an opinion on them. That's what we did, and right underneath that report on basic financial statements, that first bullet point says that we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the county's financial statements. There's no kind of higher or better opinion. That's unmodified is a fancy auditing term for clean. So that opinion was given on the county's financial statement. Our report was dated January the 9th, as Mason mentioned, and it was submitted to the LGC yesterday. In addition to issuing our opinion on the county's financial statements, there are three reports in the back of the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER, that are kind of, that kind of, they make up the compliance section. So we have our report in accordance with government auditing standards, or our Yellow Book report, and then we have two reports that we issue in conjunction with the single audit testing we perform on the county's major federal and major state programs. Our Yellow Book report, which is the one on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, it includes one finding this year, and that finding relates to an adjustment that we had to make to fix some numbers that were reported in the county's 2022 financial report. Essentially, as it kind of talks about in this third bullet point on this slide, in the prior year, the county received, as many local governments did, received their first pieces of opioid settlement funds, and there was some conflicting guidance that was put out as to how these needed to be accounted for. That guidance was clarified and sort of updated this year. And so because of that and some of the confusion that existed during the fiscal year 2022 audit process, we realized, look, this should have been recognized as revenue in the prior year and recognized in fund balance in the opioid settlement fund. And so we had, because of the dollar amount, because it was material to our opinion unit, we had to make an adjustment to fix that number in the prior year. And government auditing standards kind of ties our hands in that we have to report a finding for this because we're correcting a number that was in a previously issued financial statement. So it, you know, it reads as a material weakness in internal controls, which sounds a lot worse than it is. Really, this is just an adjustment to make sure that this item was accounted for correctly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The final two reports that we issue are the single audit reports in accordance with the uniform guidance, which is at the federal level, and the State Single Audit Implementation Act, which is the state level. We're required to go through a process where we select major programs to audit. The major programs we audited for the county's fiscal year 2023 financial compliance audit are listed here. Some of these programs we have to audit every year, like Medicaid, other programs we have to continually audit right now because the feds keep telling us we have to audit them, like the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds or ARPA. We're hoping that we're going to get some more flexibilities, we don't have to keep auditing these programs over and over, and we can look at some other programs that are on government's CFS right now. But for right now, these are the programs we audited, and our, both of our single audit reports were clean, so we had unmodified or clean opinions on compliance, and we had no findings, no findings of either non-compliance or internal, or issues with internal controls over compliance. The next couple of slides are what I referred to earlier as our required communications. So like I said, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I think it's important to touch on a few of these in the, underneath the first header where it says significant accounting policies. The third bullet point does talk about a new accounting standard. The county, the county, as with all other state and local governments, was required to implement a new standard this year involving subscription-based information technology arrangements. In a nutshell, just changed the way that we account for those. So it is a new thing. If you're somebody that looks at, like, looks at the statements from year to year and kind of compares them side by side, you'll notice this is a new thing in the financial statements. And essentially, what it amounts to is rather than recognizing these payments we make for IT subscriptions as expenses each year, we're now having to recognize it as an asset and a liability and sort of, you know, decreasing those items each year as we make our payments and as we use those assets. So kind of a unique technical accounting change. It's very similar to what we did with leases in the prior year, if you remember the implementation of the leasing standard last year. So that's, was the new accounting standard that we had to implement in fiscal year 2023. Our relationship with management, I always think it's important to touch on with the Board, that we received full cooperation from management to the conduct of the audit. We asked for access to a lot of information. We asked for access to a lot of people. County was fully cooperative with all of our requests, got us in front of the people we needed to get in front of, and got us all the information that we needed to do, to do our jobs, to complete our audit and to issue our opinion. And last but not least, I always touch on auditor independence. Not only do we have to be compliant with our ethical standards, but government auditing Not only do we have to be compliant with our ethical standards, but government auditing standards sort of imposes even stricter rules about things that we can and cannot do as the county's independent auditor. We meet all of those requirements and thus can render an independent opinion on the county's financial statements. Two quick slides here under some financial trends for the county's general fund. This slide here shows the composition of fund balance within the different categories. We report fund balance, we have the non-spendable fund balance, which is the stuff that we can't really spend. It's not in spendable form. Restricted has been set aside by outside parties. Committed has been set aside by you all, and then assigned and unassigned. And that unassigned bucket is what's available for spending at the county's discretion, not set aside or earmarked for any specific programs. As you can see, I mean, no, no huge changes over the last four years comparing 2019, or 2020 through 2023. That green bar, that restricted by state stabilization, that's a calculation that every government in North Carolina is required to go through each year. And you sort of calculate this, fund balance is not available for appropriation. The state makes you go through this calculation and essentially takes the, the non-cash portion of fund balance and says, okay, you can't appropriate this. And so we have to go through this calculation. It's not really restricted by an outside party, it's just restricted by state statute. But again, no, no big changes, no, no major negative trends stand out when you look at this over the last four years. This slide here looks at a snapshot of the general fund's total revenues and compares the total revenues to, to the, the percentage of those revenues that, that are made up of, of ad valorem taxes. We know the county's tax rate has been consistent for the last several years. We see tax revenues continuing to increase, mostly as a result of just continued increases in assessed values. Overall, ad valorem revenue staying consistent, kind of fluctuating between 60 and 63% of general fund revenue. So I see a consistent growing tax base, again, a positive financial trend. We did have one item that we referred to as a management letter comment. This is a recommendation that we include in our, in our management letter that we issue to county management. This just has to do with how we calculate the liability for compensated absences or accrued leave. Essentially, that liability was overstated last year because of some salary-related payments that had been included in the liability. So we talked to county management, we got it adjusted and corrected for fiscal year 23, and just kind of a reminder going forward to not include any of those salary-related payments related to contributions for pensions in those liabilities. A slide here, and we talked about this at a little bit greater length at the audit committee meeting this morning, but just about future accounting pronouncements, things we want to keep the county abreast of and make sure that they're aware of as we, as we move into the next couple of years for financial reporting. And then last but not least, I'll just kind of mention, as I mentioned with our audit committee meeting this morning, we offer all of our governmental clients free continuing education. So if any of you are interested in getting added to our distribution list, feel free to reach out and get your contact information to, to me through Mason or someone else in county finance, and I'd be happy to add you all to our, our distribution list. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you all might have for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Any questions?
Thank you, Tim. I just wanted to mention, whenever you were talking about the opioid funding, staff actually took that direction from the state. So they had followed the state guidance on that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Agreed, again, there was some, there was very, it was confusing and conflicting, and what ended up coming out this year, it was sort of put out as, hey, this is how this needs to be accounted for. There was no acknowledgement that what had been put out previously was maybe not correct, so.
And then with the compensated absences, that actually means that we have 950,000 more than we had budgeted in there for that.
Right, I mean, that number, that number really is not a, a, a budget number, if you will, because of, it shows up in the statement in deposition, which is the full accrual financial statement. So we're not talking about, this doesn't impact fund balance at all. But yes, I mean, the, the prior year's liability was overstated because we had included some of these pension-related payments in our estimate of the liability when we should have removed those. So, so yes, that's correct. And the number was overstated in the previous year, but we did get it corrected as of June 30, 23.
Thank you. And just for the rest of the commission, because we had a thorough discussion this morning, and everyone has said it's been a pleasure working with Tim and his team. The communication's been really good, and our staff has done an excellent job and put in a tremendous amount of time working on this. And we truly appreciate all the effort of Mason and the entire team that has worked hard on this. And I think some overtime hours too, because some of the information was coming in late. That was outside of their control from others, and it, and they really stepped up and did a tremendous amount of work.
And I'd like to add to that my thanks to not only the staff, but to everyone involved with our audit. And for me, starting my eighth year on the audit committee, folks, I feel like with this audit, at last, we're free at last from what we've been going through in the past, and hope we don't have to go back through that again.
So.
Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion to, as we did this morning, to accept the audit as presented and approve the final contract amendment for the fiscal year 2023 external audit.
And I second, and would like to point out too, the audit committee approved it this morning.
Great. So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Moving on, Mr. Hudson is next. Budget amendment for public health infrastructure.
Public Health Director Ellis Matheson has some information.
Okay. Hi, Ellis. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you. This evening, I would like to provide an overview of our spending plan for this requested budget amendment. This is a Center for Disease Control national grant that was awarded to North Carolina, and they are passing dollars down to local health departments for public health infrastructure, workforce development. The purpose of this grant is to support the public health foundational capabilities and the local health department workforce through investments and improvements so that we can better serve and protect the health of our communities. These investments and improvements are really going to help to rebuild and modernize public health, and in the long term, increase the size of the public health workforce. On this slide, you're going to see the scope of work is really going to center around three different areas. Recruit and hire new public health staff, support and sustain public health staff, and to train new and existing public health staff. We've decided to take a four-strategy approach to spend down these dollars here in Buncombe County. The first strategy is to become an academic health department here at Buncombe County. Academic health department partnerships really help to strengthen that link between public health practice and academia, and to lessen that separation between the education of the public health professional and that boots-on-the-ground public health work. They can serve as sites for joint education, research, and practice, enabling the practice and academic communities to work together to develop the current and future public health workforce, build the evidence base for public health, and to better deliver the essential public health services. So this will really allow us to be very innovative here at Buncombe County while creating a pipeline for future public health employees. Our second strategy is around creating a foundational public health course. In 2022, we were able to take part in a national survey called the Public Health Wins Survey through the DeBeaumont Foundation, and it really was centered around the public health workforce and what people really need to stay within public health. And we were able to get a large enough response with our employees that we got a specific data set for our employees here at Buncombe County. So this is really going to be able to help us drive these strategies, especially this one. These dollars will allow us to create a course that all public health employees would take upon hire to support staff in having that foundational public health knowledge around the 10 essentials of public health, public health competencies, and public health work in a North Carolina governmental agency. And then staff can really use this foundational course in the beginning of their career to build their professional development goals and advance their public health competencies. And the third and fourth strategies you'll see will focus on resilience and retention of our staff. We have implemented what we call an organizational care model within public health, and this framework has been created by all levels of our staff. And it's really all about building a culture of caring for each other so that we can care for our community. And the staff have identified equity and connection as their main guideposts with three supporting areas currently around physical, emotional, and psychological safety and professional development. So this third strategy is going to allow us to expand the different professional development continuing education that we can allow staff to attend. And that public health wins data also showed us that the ability to access continuing education really factors into staff wanting to stay in their job and also being able to have that most up-to-date science to do their job effectively and efficiently. And then finally, the fourth strategy is also tied to our public health organizational care model around resiliency. We'll use dollars to support the work groups within this model to implement identified events, activities, and training to really support staff with that overall equity and connection that they identified. Do you have any questions?
Not a question, but I just want to say I'm appreciative that the state is valuing our public health department and that you're going to be able to do this really important work to build that up. So it's wonderful news.
Thank you, yes. Great that they're letting it go local.
Ms. Matheson, thank you.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Motion and a second on the budget amendment, any thoughts or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board appointments. We do have a couple of names in front of us related to the library board and the nursing home community advisory committee.
I make a motion to appoint Artie Miller to the library board.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to reappoint Christopher Fink to the nursing home community advisory committee.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Great.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman Sloan, may I have addressed the board real quick?
Please.
I have a couple expiration on some boards and commissions from commission members. Talked to a couple of the board members. But the first one is the MSD Board and Commissioner Al Whitesides. His term has expired, and I think he expressed that he wanted to be reappointed. But I would like to do that in the board meeting and make sure that that's the direction that the board would like to go in that situation. So just want to open that up and have that discussion.
Mr. Whitesides said he did want to continue serving, okay.
I would make a motion to reappoint Commissioner Whitesides. Second.
All those in favor of extending Mr. Whitesides' term on the MSD Board, say aye. Aye. Thank you.
And, and the next one hadn't been addressed, and that is you, Vice Chair Sloan. For the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, your expiration date was the 5th of this month. So we want to see if you want to be reappointed, or you want, the board want to move into a different direction.
You know, last I heard, Chairman Newman had expressed to, since the city-appointed committee, that the commission wasn't... Well, I'll say, I'll speak for myself, that I wasn't interested in being reappointed. But I believe what he conveyed was that there weren't folks interested in serving on that board. But I won't speak for anyone else. I know it's been restructured as well, its purpose has been restructured, its membership has been restructured. But I have a conflict at that time, so I, that's why I...
So you, you do not want to be reappointed?
Correct.
So then I guess there's question around how we proceed with that board?
And I know another part of that, I'll mark, correct me if I'm wrong, another part of this is, there's new appointments for citizen members under the new bylaws of that, that committee.
It is. That, we have been in communication with the city about this, but this particular appointment is for a commission, a board of commissioner member
Right.
to be appointed to the board. I don't think, I know they, they are doing some restructuring, like you said, but I don't think that they're removing a board of commission member from their restructuring, so.
Understood.
Help me understand, this is a city commission, correct?
That's correct, it's the 3rd Thursday at 4:00.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds to me like maybe we need more information before, right, I just, I think we're going to need more information.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We'll, we'll talk amongst ourselves and get you an answer.
If y'all need anything from us, just let us know and we'll provide it. But I think that's probably just a conversation amongst board members. But let us know if y'all need any clarity from the clerk's office.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, is that everything related to board appointments, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, or twice a month, report on boards and commissions? Anything?
Since the last meeting?
Quick report out from the Shelter Working Group that, yeah, not a huge update since last time, but just had another meeting and continuing to kind of really drill down on the kind of characteristics of a high-access shelter based on kind of best practices and what we're seeing from around the country. So I think we're, we're closer and closer to kind of having a package of those characteristics ready to go to HyAC and then move forward from there.
Nothing else, okay. Moving on to announcements, February 6th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners briefing will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And also on February 6th at 5:00 PM, commissioners' regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Mr. Fru, is there any need for a closed session? Okay. No need for a closed session, so entertain anyone interested in a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Great. You adjourned.